It is now 7:03 PM. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Handrew, Commissioner Orves, Commissioner Postufka, Commissioner Lozini, Commissioner Shre. Thank you.
Everyone stand for the Pledge of Legions, please.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
So before we get into the crux of the meeting, I see we have recognition of two Eagle Scouts. I assume Abby and Mason are both here. I assume you guys are brother and sister. All right. Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about your project? You can both come up at the same time. Congratulations, first off.
Congratulations.
My name's Abby.
Hello, my name's Mason.
So we're both in troop 248 from Oakdale.
In Oakdale, yes.
We both serve as junior assistant scout masters. And do you want to go first?
Sure. I'm currently a junior here at South Fayette in the high school, and she is a sophomore. And I was fortunate enough to work with the township for my benefit, as my beneficiary. I was provided by the township with about 300 of these custom-made badges. It has a fish with a gas mask on it. I'm unsure if anybody's seen them around the township, but it says, "Drains to drinking water. Please don't dump in storm drains." As a, and I glued them on about 300 of the storm drains throughout the community.
See them?
Yes, as a reminder to not dump.
He was going to go dump stuff, and then it's on.
He stopped.
And I'd just like to say, I'm very fortunate for the opportunity, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
For my project, I made a percussion pegboard for the middle school. My beneficiary was Mr. Wasenager. He's the band director at the middle school. So our percussion sections, I'm in the percussion section, so is Mason, but like it wasn't as organized as we wanted it to be. So I'm like close with Mr. Wasenager, and he saw the Pinterest, he saw the boards on Pinterest. So I built one of them. I helped him design them, and we took measurements of the instruments. And then I led some of the scouts from my Boy Scout troop to help in building it. We built it and brought it into the middle school.
Oh, awesome.
Me and Mason both bought pictures, if you can see. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
We also have some certificates for you, so if you'd like to come up and take a quick look at your pictures and take some photos. This one's for you, Abby.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mason, too. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Good job, both of you.
There you go.
Right there.
Oh, that's neat. Yes, yeah.
If you'd like to flip through.
Yeah.
I forgot that. I thought a lot of it. I almost forgot.
The township took a couple of months, but we were able to, for this one, we were able to finish it in about a weekend. And same for yours, too, the building.
So do you have to go through paperwork and stuff? So that took a while, but the building itself was fast. About what we get to do.
There should be a section of maps and streets. If you want to build a lot of streets that way.
You got some marketing, didn't you?
That's a lot of it.
Yeah.
Good way to get your stuff.
Yeah.
Those decals actually helped the township, too, with our MS4 permit. We have to submit an annual report to the DEP, and one of the criteria are outreach and education. So we did take credit for some of the work that you did, the township did, pointing out that, you know, that you guys did the work, but it does help us in that regard. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Always good to get two brownie coins.
Yeah, right, right.
Great, congratulations. Want to get a photo? Would you guys like to come up?
Thanks. Right in the middle. That's okay.
We're gonna be with the confines of the sign. You got everybody in. Yeah.
No, I don't want to smile.
Oh, there we go. There we go, everybody. All right, one, two, three, scouts.
Scouts.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. One more, yeah. Anyone lose a chair in that mix?
All right. Thank you very much. We've got a pretty packed agenda, seven pages at this point. We'll take any public comment for any item that is currently on the agenda. I do want to remind anyone that's making a public comment that this is recorded and will be rebroadcast at a later date. Is there any public comment? Come on up. Your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Ashish Watve. Sorry. I'm Ashish Watve, and I'm resident of South Fayette. Address is 1062 Granite Drive. Yes, okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Ashish Watve, and I'm resident of South Fayette Township. I'm volunteer with Hindu Swam Sangha, HSS, and outreach coordinator for the South Fayette chapter. We call that Chapter Nalanda Shaka. HSS is a 501(c)(3) voluntary, voluntary, nonprofit, social, educational, and cultural organization. We focus on three things: selfless service, healthy living, and value-based education. In partnership with schools, first responders, and civil groups, we run food drives, yoga awareness events, and interfaith programs that build trust across communities. I'm joined by a couple of my fellow volunteers who'd be talking about a couple of other initiatives, Raksha Bandhan and our food donation drive. I'm going to talk about one of the other initiatives. So one of the most meaningful expressions of our values is our teacher appreciation program. We call it Guru Vandana. In Hindu tradition, a guru is more than a teacher. A guru is a guide who lights the path of knowledge and character. Each May, during Teacher's Appreciation Week and National Teachers' Day, Hindu students and families organize celebrations to thank the educators who shape our next generation. This is just not token "thank you," but students share short performances, speak about what they learned, offer simple and symbolic gestures, flowers, and a note and respect of, a respectful bow to the teachers, centering relationship between teacher, student, and the community. Nationally, in 2023-24, HSS held Guru Vandana events across 82 chapters in 22 states and honoring more than 2,000 educators. Many community leaders like mayors, superintendents, and administrators regularly join these events. Here in South Fayette, Nalanda Shaka conducts Guru Vandana every May. In recent years, we have recognized more than 25 South Fayette School District teachers, and we have been honored to have Dr. Chuck Herring and many respected teachers join us regularly and underscoring the gratitude and the shared community value. Dr. Herring said in one of the event that HSS work with the community reflects our mission to inspire students to be dynamic, ethical, and empathetic citizens who can flourish in global society. So he said that HSS is doing an excellent job living out that mission. So we would like to thank, we'd like to also thank all the community members and especially would like to work closely with South Fayette Township community to foster collaboration that makes the tangible difference in citizens or residents' lives. In near future, we will reach out to the mayor and respective board members and invite them as honor guests to those events and would like to seek your guidance and see how we can be more useful to the community in years forward. We commit to working within the district policies and keeping our programs brief, inclusive, and easy to host. We sincerely appreciate your time and look forward to opportunity to work together for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ashish. Is there any other public comment on agenda items?
My name is Arthi, and my address is 2036 Fieldstone Drive. Good evening, everyone. My name is Arthi Parnerkar. I am a South Fayette resident and HSS volunteer for the last nine years and a founding member of HSS South Fayette Chapter, Nalanda Shaka. HSS focuses on working with schools, first responders, and civic groups to strengthen community trust. Today, I would like to highlight how we observe Raksha Bandhan as Universal One-Night Day, a simple act of gratitude for our local first responders. Raksha Bandhan means bond of protection. Traditionally, a family member ties a rakhi, a small thread, signifying mutual care and shared responsibility. HSS carries that spirit into the public square by honoring those who safeguard all of us: police, fire, EMS, and other public servants. Each August or early September, HSS volunteers visit departments to offer rakhi, a note of thanks, and sometimes a short cultural greetings. It breathes inclusive and practical. A 10-minute moment that says, "We see you, we value you." Across the country, departments have told us this visit's deepen connection and reflect the diverse welcoming character of their communities. Here in South Fayette, Nalanda Shaka has embraced this tradition. Last year, we visited and appreciated the South Fayette Police and first responders at Oak Ridge Volunteer Fire Department. This year, we are again celebrating Raksha Bandhan and reaching out to South Fayette Police and additional first responders team. We will coordinate around shifts, keep it short, and ensure the gesture is open to all staff regardless of background or belief. Why does this matter? Because trust is built in small, consistent acts. A thread on the wrist is symbolic, but the sentiment is concrete: mutual respect, shared responsibility, and community care. When students, families, and neighbors show up humbly and consistently, our civic fabrics get stronger. We would be honored to work with the township community, police leadership, fire EMS captains, and the school partners to make this visit easy and meaningful. Our volunteers handle the logistics. There is no cost to the departments, and we welcome the mayor and board members as honored guests whenever schedules allow. On behalf of Nalanda Shaka, thank you to our first responders for the risks you take and the steadiness you bring. We are grateful, and we look forward to continue this tradition together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chinmai Vadiapu, and my address is 3519 Washington Pike Bridgeville, PA. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chinmai. I'm a rising junior at South Fayette High School, and I've been a HSS volunteer since my childhood. HSS is a volunteer organization based on selfless service, sewa, healthy living, and value-based education. Today, I would like to talk about how we practice sewa through Seva Diwali, a community food drive that brings family and neighbors together to fight hunger. At its core, seva diwali is simple: collect nonperishable food and get it to local pantries and shelters. Nationally, it has grown into a collaborative effort. Most recently, volunteers helped gather 502,000 pounds of food with 245 organizations across 34 states. Here at home, HSS chapters in the Pittsburgh area donated more than 14,000 pounds of food over the past two years. I have helped stack and sort those boxes. You can feel the impact you make as you organize the food. This year, seva diwali runs from September 20th through November 10th. Our volunteers publish a short list of necessary things like canned proteins, grains, kid-friendly staples, cereals, and other nonperishable foods. Our volunteers handle pickup and delivery. We ask for a convenient collection spot and help spreading the word. We will keep the area tidy, follow host policies, and schedule timely pickups to make participation easy. Why does this matter? Because food security is about basic dignity. When families can count on their next meal, students learn better, parents breathe easier, and our community becomes stronger and kinder. On behalf of Nalanda Shaka, thank you for listening and anything you can do between September 20th and November 10th. Thank you, and we can turn small acts into full meals. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, we'll move along. Correspondence. South Fayette Library, anything, Ben? Beer for books, 9/11.
Yeah.
All right. I read your report. Oak Ridge Volunteer Fire Department, that's on there for anyone to look at. EMS, Dan?
Sorry, I didn't get along.
John.
But it was our six-month report, so I did want to do some highlights.
Yep.
Also, tonight I have a board member with me in case there's any questions you have, Mike Venom, who is a South Fayette Township resident.
I know Mike.
Do you know Mike? Just wanted to highlight some of the information in the six-month report, which is the fact that we've had 2,897 calls this year so far. That's a 13% increase from 2024. So we've been really busy. We have added new cardiac monitors to all of our trucks. Those will improve communication with the hospital so that we can transmit EKGs. I mean, we can read them in the field, but if we transmit them to the hospital, the doctors can read them, and then they'll activate the cath lab and get that all ready for us by the time we get there. So that'll be an improvement. Through a grant, we've gotten video laryngoscopes on all the trucks, which is kind of some cutting-edge technology that's already in the area. So we were proud to have that on our trucks. One of the other things we did is we ordered an ambulance, which will be delivered in 2026. We, obviously, these units are out on the road, and they do wear down. So we did have to order a replacement for one that's become increasingly costly to maintain and operate. Just for your information, the cost of the new ambulance is $320,000 for us. So there's a significant investment into that for the community and to make sure we have reliable response. You know, we want to be transparent about the finances, right? I mean, it's, you know, Medicare and Medicaid are going to take a cut in about two years, in 2026. That is going to impact us. So what we bill patients and what we get back is going to be impacted by some of the new legislation that's coming out. So, you know, we need, we're asking the township to strongly consider we'll be involved with the budget meetings, but, you know, to consider some assistance. You know, this $320,000 is got to be, you know, it's an impact to our operational budget. So we would appreciate some consideration on that. And other than that, if there's any questions, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Consent, calendar items. Approval of minutes from last month. Anyone want to make a motion to approve last month's minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Payment of bills.
Just a few things to note in this month's bills. We do have expenses for Cecil Sturgeon. We'll talk a little bit more tonight about the full-depth reclamation that went out there. But those roads has been repaired. We spent $80,000 on materials that show up here as well as supplies for our recent expansion of salt facilities to Boys Home and to Fairview. We've had some salt deliveries there, so we're seeing those show up this month as well as our September health insurance payments. Those are our top five bills for the month.
Someone like to make a motion to accept payment for bills?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Financial reports?
We, looking at the budget to actual report, we did have a workshop with the board a few weeks back when we were our second quarter. Just looking at the month of July, a couple of things to point out is that the property tax is at 9.4 million collected, which is an increase of about 300,000 or 230,000 since last month. So it is growing. We're, we think we're going to be right at our target there of just over 10 million. Other indicators, we spent some time previously talking about that real estate transfer tax. You'll see this month it's at 445,000. Still lagging behind a little bit, although we did have a strong month in that regard. Picked up another hundred and some thousand bucks compared to where we were last month. Overall, on the revenue side of the equation, we're at 15 million collected to date. And on our expenditure side, we're trending just over 9 million. So things are looking good. We should end the year with another surplus, and we think our budget projections are looking to hold pretty accurate.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the financial reports?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bank account balances?
Not much to point out there. General funds at 7.2 million this month, or capital reserve. We did make a transfer, so it is in line with our fund balance policy of 10%. But we have a lot of capital projects to spend on before the rest of the year, so we'll be drawing that down and making another transfer before year end.
Any questions? Kind of a motion to approve the bank account balances?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine, liaison reports, public safety. I know that the Fire Advisory Council had a meeting. I believe it was on the 7th. I was out of town. I was hoping Pat might be able to add some comments. He's not here tonight, so I know part of their initiative was to work on that job description for the potential of a fire administrator. So I'll get caught up on that and have more to report next meeting. Public infrastructure and service. Becky? Leanne, finance?
So I do want to say that unfortunately Lou Gorski, who was the founding, the founder essentially of Shake Cog, has passed away. He was the executive director for over 30 years. So, you know, aside from that, just wanting to make everybody aware, but at the same time, we're still working through the bylaws, and when someone is in a position for that long, they do have a lot of just legacy knowledge, if you will, that unfortunately perhaps wasn't totally passed on to somebody else. So Shake Cog is kind of working through that. And when I talk about legacy knowledge, it's a lot of the bids and how things were done and how they were organized. Like the garbage is a big one, refuse and waste. So committees will be set up to kind of work through that. It was untimely, you know, obviously. But I just wanted to let everybody know. So Shake Cog is kind of in a transition at this point, just trying to figure out like, okay, what's the new vision? Getting a new executive director. And a lot of the benefit, just because I know there's some new folks here and what Shake Cog does is it brings different communities together to pool just the needs, right? So when we talk about garbage is one, it could be CCTV, it could be all these different things. And obviously, when you have more communities coming together, you have more buying power, more leverage to hopefully get better pricing. So that's why it's important. So anyway, that's where we're at on that front.
Thank you. Dee, intergovernmental relations?
Nothing to report, Chuck.
Community and economic development?
Yeah, sure, thank you. I would just make mention that we're slowly moving forward with the major rehab project on Millers Run Road, which is the old township building. So hope to have some bids out by, what, end of third quarter, fourth quarter?
I think we have an update later in the agenda.
Oh, we do? Okay, good. Okay. So things are moving there. Thanks.
Item 10, any old or unfinished business? Item 11, new business. 11A, discuss and consider SP-01-2025 South Fayette Township School District Bus Depot. Preliminary and final land development application, parcel 405-G-G7, zoned R2. The proposed project involves the development of a new bus depot facility for the South Fayette Township School District at 4434 Battle Ridge Road. The project includes construction of a two-story bus depot building with an integrated maintenance garage, bus wash bay, and support facility as well as associated site improvements, including paved parking areas, stormwater management, infrastructure. Is there anyone?
There are representatives for this project. I think, John, it'd be prudent if you give just a brief description of the project and why the school district is undertaking.
Hi, good evening. John Frederick with Civil and Environmental Consultants representing the South Fayette Township School District for the Bus Depot project. This facility is located adjacent to Old Oakdale Road, just south of Battle Ridge. It's a 114-acre parcel owned by the school district, and the operations currently exist on the east side of Old Oakdale Road, the south end of the campus. This is a brand-new facility, new construction to house the busing, the van storage, as well as the two-story maintenance garage. The lower level of the garage itself is for the bus maintenance. There's a wash bay, a fueling terminal for the buses and vans. And we've got parking for 93 vehicle parking spaces, which are primarily the van and bus drivers as well as some of the maintenance staff located at this facility. The upper level of this facility is about 3,600 square feet, which will house about six office spaces and some conference room space. The access to the bus terminal facility is off of Old Oakdale at the south end of this 114-acre parcel. Again, relocating the current bus facility from the east side to the west side, obviously making room for a much greater project, which will be coming from, in front of the township here in a very short amount of time. Again, we've worked closely with the township staff. We've had several meetings to introduce the project. We work with the planning commission and the reviewing engineer's office. I believe we did receive a clean letter from Gibson Thomas regarding our submittal. We continue to work with Allegheny County Conservation District for the MPDS permit for the site facility. Again, we've gone through the wetland studies, stream studies. We've submitted all the pertinent plans, met all the zoning criteria, a pretty significant landscape plan, lighting plan. So again, I don't think we have any outstanding items basically addressing the borough's or the township's review on this particular project. We've talked about site circulation, turn movements off of Old Oakdale. And as part of the project, we did submit waivers for consideration as well, which include the buffers for the wetlands, traffic study, traffic fee assessment, and a discussion for sidewalks.
I was going to note that item as well. The planning commission did recommend approval of this with the approval of the four conditions that were noted for modification. So as John mentioned, waiver of traffic impact fees, waiver of a special traffic study, the sidewalk discussion, basically to kick that to the developer's agreement stage to come to an agreement between both parties for that aspect of it. And the wetland buffer, there was a small infringement on the wetland buffer for the driveway. So they did approve, recommend approval of the project with those four items.
I'm fine with all four. I mean, there was some talk about granting the waiver on the Battle Ridge side, on the Bus Depot side, but moving the sidewalk to the school property, is that still in play?
Again, moving this towards a developer's agreement so both parties can have a discussion as to the nature and extent of those sidewalks.
So this is for approval of the final land development, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion? Go ahead, if you have a question, go ahead.
So if we approve at this stage and it gets kicked to, what, basically, John, what you're requesting is to focus on some of the waivers and the discussion there as part of the developer agreement. What happens if we don't come to an agreement, right? What happens between the parties on some of the topics? Then what happens?
Leanne, I'll jump into that. So if you, if both parties don't come to an agreement on the limits of the sidewalk, where the sidewalk's going to be installed and whatnot, then the board won't execute the developer's agreement, and they will not have an approval to move forward.
Got it, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a question. In terms of trees, I didn't know whether or not you could see the bus depot from Old Oakdale. Are the trees going to stay in place?
Actually, yeah, there's an extensive amount of tree cover on the property today.
Yeah, sure, that's what I mean. Are they going to be, is it going to be hidden or is it going to be wide open with all the trees?
Down over the hill.
Okay. It's pretty far down where you can't see it from.
Elevation difference, the constructed entrance off of Old Oakdale, is it 1,250? The first floor elevation where the office space is, is it 1,200? So there's already a 50-foot elevation change. a 50-foot elevation change. So this building is set way below the current cartway of Old Oakdale.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Anyone like to make a motion for approval of the preliminary and final land development application?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Item B, discuss and consider SP-02-2025, tractor supply, Newberry preliminary and final land development application, parcel 197R-30, which is zoned PED. Construction of tractor supply infiltration basin, two infiltration trenches, and a garden center and display pads.
I did want to mention, the developers' consultant for this project submitted a request to be tabled for this project. They submitted it, dated yesterday, to the planning office. They're requesting it be tabled until the next board meeting.
Okay, so we don't-
It's my understanding they're contemplating some minor changes, but they didn't want to come and get an approval and then have to go back through-
So we don't take any action?
I would recommend doing a motion to accept their request to table.
Would someone like to make a motion to, to accept the applicant's request to table their application?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item C, discuss and consider resolution 2025-16, authorizing the township manager as signatory on the PennDOT reimbursement agreement for the Bridge Street Bridge replacement project.
Just quickly on the reimbursement agreement, this is related to Bridge Street. So, we were able, with the help of Gibson Thomas, to have this bridge placed on the TIP program, the state capital budget program. So there will be no match required of the township. The engineering fees will be paid for. The reimbursement agreement that we did have, the solicitor review, kind of dispels out how we'll incur expense and get reimbursed for it through this project.
And this is to authorize you as signatory?
Right.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion on resolution 2025-16, authorizing the township manager as signatory on the PennDOT reimbursement agreement for Bridge Street?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, discuss and consider a motion to approve resolution 2025-17, authorizing the township manager to submit a grant application to the multimodal transportation fund grant in the amount of $685,700 for the Old Oakdale sidewalk program.
You might recall, this was on our agenda last month. We spelled out a project that would apply for a grant to cover the cost of sidewalks, that cover some of what we talked about this evening. In that application, we were applying for roughly 50% of the project costs. After submitting it and discussing it with DCD staff, the feedback to us was, you guys should probably submit for all of it, for the full amount. So we're asking you to just pass a new resolution with the grant amount being increased to 100% of the project cost.
Very good. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve resolution 2025-17, authorizing the township manager to submit a grant application for the multimodal transportation grant in the amount of $685,700?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, this sounds like a little more of the same. Consider a motion to approve resolution 2025-18, authorizing the assistant township manager to submit a grant application for the redevelopment authority of Allegheny County in the amount of $500,000 for the, for the pinch bridge rehabilitation.
You're actually right, yeah, similar, very similar. Different grant program, different bridge.
Different bridge.
But, yep.
Where's this bridge now?
It's on Tom's Run, just further down past Bridge Street.
Oh, got it, got it.
It's smaller.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, discuss and consider a reduction of bond for charter homes at Hastings for the reduction for Phase 3 of $1,126,352.15, leaving a balance of $174,177.30, and the reduction of Phase 4 in the amount of $1,199,715.55, leaving a balance of $349,043.75.
The request came from the developer. We did ask Gibson Thomas to review work that has been performed and completed, and they verified these amounts. Anything to add to their, Jay? No, the Phase 3 request, that amount was slightly lessed. There was some sidewalk that they were requesting that wasn't yet installed, so we did adjust these numbers, but these are accurate.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Or I should wait for you?
Someone like to make a motion for the reduction of the bond for charter homes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, discuss and consider a reduction of bond for charter homes at Hastings for Phase 4. This is for grading in the amount of $67,562, leaving a balance of $0. So I assume that's done.
Correct, yeah. They posted a bond for the blanket grading to get started on Phase 4. I have the land development approval, so that's why there was a separate bond for that. They've completed that work.
All right. Someone like to make a motion for the reduction of bond at charter homes' Phase 4 grading?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
H, discuss and consider the second and final pay app to Shields Asphalt Paving for the 2025 paving program in the amount of $74,770.75, leaving a zero balance.
Correct. All that work has been completed under their contract.
Okay.
This gets, this gets total work just slightly under a million bucks, I want to say.
Correct. Yes. Very good.
Great.
Would someone like to make a motion for that final pay?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, discuss and consider a motion to award a contract to Mealy and Mealy and Sons Incorporated for the amount not to exceed $247,300, $247,370 for Panhandle Trail Improvement Project. So I believe part of this was paid for by grant, and then this is an NTE.
Correct, yeah. $130,000 in grant, so just a little bit more than, than half of it. And this paves 1.8 mile stretch.
Yep, we talked about that last month.
Yeah.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item J, discuss and consider a motion to authorize payment in the amount of $48,697.26 to West Penn Power for the installation of power to the Fairview Ballfields.
This was a heavy lift, but finally got, got done here. So, to get power up to the Fairview Ballfields, we need to take it from Mayview Road. So we got to, had the power company come out, look at it. It worked with our people to help design it. The work has to be done by West Penn. This is their proposal to do the work. I think we asked you guys just to look at it for quantities and values, and it seems like it's, it's in line. We don't really have any other option that I'm aware of.
Correct.
No, it is in line, and there will be an easement following installation, but no, that's, there was no other option to bring power. It seems like a fair price.
Yeah, I thought there would be more.
What do we have? Do we have this, some of this budget, correct? Or is this, is this an overage?
I believe this is budgeted.
Yeah, I mean, we have the, the project included bringing power up to there, so we didn't have a dollar amount based in there. I think we had a space holder, and we're still going to be under that, the total amount that appeared in capital for the project will be under that, including this.
Okay, no, that's fine.
And this was overhead work, and then from that point, it'll be underground.
Okay.
Would anyone like to make a motion to authorize payment of $48,697.26 to West Penn Power for the installation of power for the new Fairview Ballfields?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item K, discuss and consider a motion to accept proposal from Clayton Engineering Associates for MEP Design Services for the 515 Miller's Run Road.
Right, so thinking about 515, Commissioner Handar asked about it before. We had gotten a proposal from MS Consultants to take the, take the whole project through design development. Kind of looking at it with you guys and with our construction consultant, Rob Skolarsky, we, we're trying to find ways to bring the number down. There were a few items on the proposal that we thought seemed heavy. One of them was the cost of MEP Engineering Design Services. We did shop it. We had two other firms walk through, take a look at it. This group is much lower. We had a coordination call with MS. Both groups seem to be aligned, so we're recommending that you award this. This, this takes the MEP design, I think it's 32,000-
500.
32.5. It was closer to 80 in the original proposal, so we're-
That's a good day's work.
We're trying to trim that down.
So really quick, so then, from Clayton Engineering, they've already had a discussion with MS Consultants, and they seem to-
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we had a coordination call. They were provided with CAD drawings, and just made sure that everyone was on the same page.
Good, okay.
Would anyone like to make a motion to accept their proposal from Clayton Engineering for MEP Design Services for 515 Miller's Run Road?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item L, discuss and consider a motion to advertise ordinance 2025-2, amending Chapter 240 of the South Bay Township Code by establishing regulations for renewable energy systems.
Now, this is just to advertise the ordinance? This is to advertise it, right. Chris, you helped us put this together. Maybe you want to give us a high-level overview of what this would do for us?
Yeah. You will also be needing to advertise, would that advertisement include the public hearing too for it?
Um, we can make it be that way, absolutely.
Okay, because, yeah. And then, but basically what we did is we made the small wind, small solar, and hydronic heat systems permitted in all districts. That would be like solar panels for your house, that kind of thing. But however, the large, the large wind, large solar are permitted as conditional accessory uses in C2, and a conditional principal use in I1. And that's-
Yeah, right. So like, our goal was to keep them, protect the residential districts, steer them towards the other areas, and come up with some safeguards that just allow for buffers and whatnot. So, we had nothing here before, so Chris and her team helped put this ordinance together. We'll advertise it. I wasn't aware of the hearing, so we'll have, we'll have a public hearing as well.
There'll be two advert, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Two advertisements, yeah.
Do we need to take action on this, or just?
Yeah, a motion to advertise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to make a motion to advertise for ordinance 2025-2, amending Chapter 240 of the South Bay Township Code, establishing regulations for renewable energy?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item M, discuss and consider a motion to advertise ordinance 2025-3, amending Chapter 183 of the South Bay Township Code relating to the use of e-scooters in township parks.
Paul, you want to touch on this?
Sure. It was recommended by the Parks and Rec Board. We looked at, you know, not a complete ban in the parks, but allowing, determining where they could be allowed, specific sidewalks, trails, and just regulating the rules on the road. Kind of, it reflected the PEA state law, and we kind of copied a couple other townships that have kind of already gone through this process.
Does this apply to any other township, I see it right there, other township property that's not in a park?
Yes. So it would kind of apply to like this building?
Right.
But not like township roads, because that would be kind of a different, a different-
And once again, this is just advertise, a motion to advertise the ordinance, and it will also be subject to public hearings?
Do we need a hearing for this?
I don't think we need, it's not changing the zoning. This is just an ordinance, right.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to advert, you have a question?
Yeah. So, this is only for the parks?
Parks, trails, and township property.
Okay. Did Chief, did you look at this?
Yes, I did.
I did.
Okay.
We reviewed it as well.
Okay. Doesn't necessarily solve the problem of kids on the road, but that's another issue.
Around 50 or Miller's Run Road.
We're gonna have to address that later on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't, this doesn't affect like Washington Pike or any other township roads, but we enforce that anyway if, if we do have that, so.
Thank you.
As long as you're good, Chief.
Would anyone like to make a motion to advertise ordinance 2025, amending Chapter 183 of the Township Code relating to the use of e-scooters in township parks? I should say, and property.
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item N, discuss and consider a motion to appoint an interim code enforcement officer and advertise for a permanent code enforcement officer.
Right, for the role of interim, I'm recommending that the board appoint Mike Bloker, he's a retired police officer, express an interest in, in writing, and he's able to start right away. So it allows us to have coverage while we do a search.
Does anyone have any questions?
Sure.
That's wonderful. Could I have a motion to appoint an interim code enforcement officer, Mike Bloker?
I'll make that motion.
And advertise for a permanent code enforcement officer?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item O, discuss and consider a motion to advertise for the Public Works laborer position.
We had a retirement. Dale Kirkpatrick retired recently. Gave us, gave us some notice, but not a lot, so we didn't, we weren't able to, to get this last month. So, we'd like to try to get someone backfilled on that spot before winter.
That's fine. I'll make the motion.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to advertise for the Public Works laborer? Tim?
I already made it.
All right, all in favor?
I got excited about the labor.
Item P, discuss and consider a tax refund in the amount of $757 from Kevin Byber. So I read this. It's actually not from Kevin Byber, it's the double payment?
I don't know much about this. I saw that it says duplicate tax payment, but I didn't-
I think this resident was here maybe three or four meetings ago.
Okay.
Someone make a motion to refund the amount of $757?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Departmental reports, managers' report.
Yeah, just a few things to touch upon. You know, no agenda items tonight, but wanted to mention that we are moving forward with revising, expanding the planned economic development district that we had spoke about. We did have a kickoff call with our comp plan authors, HRG. So we'll be looking to get, you know, maybe a, a meeting with a, a follow-up meeting to kind of hone in on some of the finer points of this. We provided them with the work papers that we had, some of the, the maps that we had drawn up, the work that, that Tim, you were part of. And we'll be looking to kind of build on that. Our schedule is to hopefully run that concurrently with our LERTA map amendments, and try to do both before year end. So, there, there will be a need for some public outreach as part of that. But just kind of giving you guys a heads up that we're going to be ramping those things up. You know, go ahead.
Sorry, what's the project cost for engaging HRG?
It was $7,500 for each project, for a total of $15,000.
Okay. Thank you.
I mentioned the Miller's Run Rehab Project. I did have a chance, along with Paula, to speak with our, our senior group yesterday about the project. They had a fair amount of questions about transition and, you know, what, what goes on during construction. So, I know we need, we have a lot to do to get to that point, but once we get to that point, there are some, some other things we have to consider. So as we're making our plans, we're going to have to start thinking about those temporary location issues we're going to have for the tenants over there. So, I had some discussions with Ben before, but we'll be, you know, kind of ramping those up as the project evolves. Looking to move forward with our desire to widen Hickory Grade Road. You guys recall we had a design for this. We do have an active permit. We had a project call not long ago. What, what we were looking to do was use this as an opportunity to maybe do some beautification, right? So instead of just strand poles along 50, include some decorative mast arms, some areas for landscaping. I know a few had expressed some interest in maybe some, some trees or some landscaping along, along 50 and Hickory Grade. And there is going to be a need for wayfinding signage as well in that intersection. We're talking about maybe changing some traffic patterns, directing people both to the building and to the police department, as well as under, identifying, you know, businesses in that area, so it's easy for motorists to get to. We're hoping to do those in the next couple of weeks slash month here, and then hope to get the project out to bid. I know we, once we get to that point, we'll have some discussions probably with, with property owners and whatnot about how it's going to impact them. But the hard part of securing the permit and all that is already secure, so we do want to move this forward. And this would be a traffic impact fee paid project.
Not directly related, but just, I think we talked about it when we came up for the last budget workshop. Any update on the timing of those lights at the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, we, I mean, we did have a few people come out and look at them, you know, the, the timings of them were reset. We do, does feel like they're still not working. I know we're going, we're continuing to get complaints about it, so.
It's like New York City.
Yeah, I don't really have an answer for what the bug is. We are monitoring it. You know, we have contractors that are able to work on it, but I don't have a, a more definitive response right now.
I think a lot of it is people blocking the box coming out of, like, Newberry.
It's Newberry Market there.
Yeah.
Screws up the light system.
Yep.
Do that.
I know Pat's not here.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. I know that he has a conflict tonight. He was trying to get here late, but doesn't look like he, he's going to make it in time.
Yeah, I read his, his report. Maybe we can talk about a couple of the first bullets. An executive session?
Okay.
I know he's had a busy month with a lot of the tax issues. Do you want to move on to building permits?
Yeah, great. Looking at building permits, not a ton of activity this month. Just a few commercial permits, $762 of permit fees. These are mostly for signs. And then, you know, $7,900 in residential permits. I think there's only one new construction-
I think there's only one new construction of a home. The rest are decks and accessory uses, those kind of things. So looks like we need to pick up the pace. We want to keep up with twenty two thousand twenty four, but these things are kind of hard to predict and ebb and flow. So, you know, they are what they are at this point.
I'm fine with it. Andrea? Communications and Community Development.
Hello, Andrea Eglar, Director of Communications and Community Development. The big news today that people are excited about is that the bridge on Miller's Run Road that they call Dolphin Run opened this afternoon. Yeah. Pendot said that there will be some odds and ends going on through the spring, but it's going to be more down by the stream. So it should not affect the roadway. So we're pretty free and clear there. An update on the TV channel. We're we're running. We've kind of been doing a soft launch. Everything seems to be going well. It's it's out there. It's it's airing. I'm dealing with our cable cast company, not Comcast, but Cable Cast that we have the equipment with, just to answer some questions about resolution. As in the kind of pixelation of our channel. It is S D. It's not H D. So if anyone has that question, we don't have the ability to do H D. So it's not going to be the most perfect crisp channel, but I'm just looking into, is there any way we can improve it at all? It doesn't look like we there's really much we can do, but. So since things seem to be, you know, operating fine, we'll look at the fall and kind of, you know, actively announcing it. But I did get a nice handwritten letter from someone with the Senior Center today. They're very pleased with it and already are, you know, are looking at it and say that it's more than they even, you know, expected. So we so we do know that, you know, we've satisfied, you know, a need there for the for the TV station. And I am starting to work with the school communications director. We're going to be getting together to discuss, you know, some ways that we can cooperate on that and figure out how to do that.
Where'd you find the picture of that TV?
That's in my house.
It's in your basement.
My old fashioned basement TV. Good old rabbit ears.
I remember those ones.
Quick question though. Oh, for the TV, is there? And it's good. We're working. You're working with the school district, but maybe like, I don't know, what about? I'm just thinking long term, like sports organizations, like, I don't know, record games or just different things like football games, soccer games, whatever, baseball, did that?
You mean non-school sports?
No, like small through the school. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that definitely can be, you know, part of the discussion that I'll ask them about and we can talk about. I'm not. I don't know what setup they have for that.
It might be licensed. I think you have to buy a subscription to like N A N H F S. Does that sound right? So rebroadcast those probably would not be permitted.
Okay.
But I I like the idea of working with the school. I mean, it's the opportunity for graduation and plays and, you know, different events. And I know they have a really good media program that maybe, you know, they can participate in helping you get content. And the expectation wouldn't be we're always the one creating the content. So that's great.
Yeah, certainly.
Thanks, Andrea.
You're welcome. Most of my month and summer really has been focused on Community Day along with Parks and Rec. That is coming up Saturday and Paula will talk about that. But I wanted to note that it's it's looks like we this we may have exceeded the number of sponsors this year. I counted today forty four sponsors. Usually we have around forty, but I think that's a few more. And it looks like we probably have exceeded our a number of vendors as well. So after the event and everything, we'll have all the numbers. But the participation from businesses, both, you know, financially and the number that are planning to be in person, you know, is just better than ever. So it's looking, you know, really good.
Great.
Yeah. And two more things. I don't know if you've heard Blaze Pizza was closing at the Gateway Shops at Newbury. Roots Natural Kitchen is going to be moving in there. I had a virtual meeting with their advertising director. They said they're planning to open in January. They just opened in July in Scott Township. And they're self vet when they said they plan to be their fifth location. So that's what's looks like is coming there. And then also prior to your next meeting is our second TV and electronics recycling.
Your three year old went away.
I get their little TV away. I'll get a smart TV.
There you go.
Yeah. So September, Saturday, September, September sixth at the Farm Market again, and that's open to everybody, including residents and non-residents.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Engineers report.
Good afternoon again, board. Our report is dated August the seventh. We've we've covered a number of these items already in tonight's business, but I'll give a few highlights. I wanted to mention the demolition project, seven forty five Dutch Hill. We had previously bid that, so we're going to be working with a contractor to accomplish that demolition. Fifty one South Fayette Street. Our staff is doing the asbestos and preparing the bid documents for that one, as well as eighteen Morgan Street. So those ones will be moving along shortly. The Panhandle Trail Paving, that was awarded previously tonight, so we're anxious to get that one moving. We have a number of planning projects that have been previously approved and are under construction inspection. I wanted to note a few items. Maybe Road Town Homes. That that project should be breaking ground here shortly. That's for sixteen duplex units, which would be a thirty, sixteen duplex buildings. Which would be thirty two total buildings. That should start construction shortly. The South Fayette School District did submit the the primary school plans after our report was posted, so that'll be on for acceptance at the Planning Commission Meeting on the twenty eighth. The Dunkin' Donuts land development will be heard at this month's Planning Commission as well as the subdivision that goes along with it. If you're not aware, in South Fayette Commons, they are moving the Dunkin' further out. It's going to be a drive through only. It's not going to be for patrons inside. And then there'll be the addition of a an additional parcel there for future development. The G S L landscaping team has submitted a plan for a land development and a subdivision. Outside of that, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I don't.
Thank you, Jase.
Thank you.
I know Vitaly is not here. Anything highlights in there?
Just maybe quickly, I feel like Vitaly here. Page fourteen of my report. I mentioned Cecil Sturgeon. He gives some pretty good details on the work that was done out there that that first slide just kind of gives the meets and bounds of what was what was done. Next slide looks at the cost. So the that the total cost was under a hundred and twenty thousand, about a hundred and eighteen nine for the project. And there's some photos there that just kind of give you an idea of of what they what they did to to that roadway. So I think it turned out great. You know, I know we had a lot of that road has been forever, you know, a problem for us. So do you mind looking at the photos or showing the the next ones? Just kind of speak to what if you if you guys haven't traveled on the road, it is very much improved. So. We're happy with the results and looking to continue that that same kind of process for.
Cecil Rising.
Yeah, Cecil Rising in the future.
Cool. Paul? Busy week?
Sorry?
You have a busy week?
Very. So sorry if I miss anything. My brain is focused on Community Day. So we'll start with Community Day. It's this Saturday. As Andrea said, it's our largest. We have made new vendor spots in making it work. So hopefully everyone come out for a great day for the community. Weather's looking good. Knock on wood. So one other, before I get into five, a bunch of park stuff. So the other kind of program stuff, I just want to say thanks to our police department. We did a new activity this year for the National Night Out. Couple of our police officers came up to the splash pad and played with the kids. We hand out free popsicles. It was a a great success. So I think we're going to continue that if that's okay. So that was something new and exciting. And we have a couple of speaker series coming up. We when John and I went down to the Senior Center, they were very excited about the seniors for safe driving and a couple of our flower planter activities. So still trying to bump up our senior and adult program. So. An update on the ball fields. If Andrea, you go, I think it's page three. Field turf did a couple aerial pictures. So we're making great progress. They're actually delivering the turf this week. I haven't been up there today, yesterday or today, but I'll be up there tomorrow. We're getting ready for Community Day. So turf should be delivered. Where you see the stone is, that's all the infield. So the infield will be turf and the outfield will be grass. So once they get the turf in, then it's kind of all the amenities. So fencing, sidewalks, all that. Still on track. But these pictures were pretty cool to see, and then they'll do pictures at the end. So we're on track. Very excited for that project. A couple of updates. So for the turf multipurpose fields, unfortunately, we have a little bit of a delay. We need to submit a major modification to for our N P D S permit. When we originally did our permit, kind of backstory, we did the original permit included the ball fields, the multipurpose and the trails because we tried to get it all in. The fields were kind of on the smaller side. The turf was for what to accommodate the sports we have there now. We kind of want to go a little bit bigger to accommodate like high school soccer, you know, all those. We don't want to. We want to do it right. So we have to go in for a permit modification. Just spoke with Gibson Thomas today. They got surveys over to Field Turf. Field Turf needs about three weeks to design, get it back to Gibson Thomas to make some changes to the stormwater and get it to the conservation, hopefully by the end of September, mid-October. Jason did say he talked to the Conservation District to kind of give a heads up that we don't want this in their hands too long. So hopefully we have everything back to us kind of far enough before the end of the year that we can go to construction early spring twenty twenty six. So that's the update on those. So when we get into budget seizing, we'll be budgeting for this project in twenty twenty six. And as a reminder, we have like one, I think one point three million dollars towards this project.
Yeah, right in the grant. Okay.
Yeah.
So it's supposed to be done when, do you think?
So if we start.
If it starts in.
In early spring, probably about two, three months construction, probably summer.
Okay.
We don't have to wait for grass or anything to grow. So it's not like the ball fields.
Saves us money on grass growth.
Anything on the on the multipurpose fields, you know, not really the update I wanted to give, but that's kind of where we're at.
Do you have an initial estimate on the cost?
I did. They kind of gave me a full on in with a lot of different ad alternates. So I kind of still want to meet with them because they had fence option or netting option. So I still kind of want to go down all of that. And then we'll put like a lump sum in the budget for all of that. Then also all ad alternates that you guys can decide to on. So.
Okay.
Yep. As for the splash pad, everything's going well. We have a couple adjusted hours till Labor Day just because of staffing. Kids went to college and back to school. I have no idea how polls can stay open till Labor Day because the kids and your staff, you're very limited. The Parks and Rec Board a couple of weeks ago discussed kind of some policy recommendations. They're thinking to get some recommendations to you next month about changing our rentals. All our parks or pavilions in the park take one rental a day. But at the splash pad where we have staff, we're thinking multiyear to two rentals a day. So that would be able to increase revenue for our pavilion rentals, where the staff can go in, clean up and do the turnover where the other pavilions, we don't really have the staff to do it. So we're looking at that. I'll have those recommendations to the Parks and Rec Board in September and then recommendations to you. We already do have some rentals for next year because we take rentals a year in advance. So it'd be after we, you know, after you guys pass the the update, any rentals after that could be some some changes. Also went to the Parks and Rec Board kind of about tennis courts based off of the people who spoke last month. You know, talked about some ideas. They want to, I talked about the school. They want to really know what's happening with the school, one with their courts that they're doing. And kind of maybe for next year, plan for some funding to do some planning and kind of really dig into, take our Parks Master Plan. What those recommendations were, you know, Treveskin has been kind of thrown around to really look at Treveskin, what fits best there. Or, you know, is a park that's already more established a better option if we want to kind of do courts in the near future? So that was just some discussion we had at the Parks and Rec Board. That's kind of all I had. Sorry. A lot. If you have any questions, happy to answer it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great. Good news.
See you on Saturday.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Chief?
John Feenick, Chief of Police. In July, I was July twenty third, to be exact, I was invited to be a guest speaker at the H O V H O A Forum. Met with about thirty five people, very informative on both ends. We gave them a lot of information, got a lot of good feedback. Main topic again was e-scooters, e-bikes. So it was. It was really informative meeting. Also, at the beginning of July, about the second week in July, I pulled one of our two investigators off of investigations to put them on patrol due to two officers being on light duty. I'm hoping to get one of those officers back by the end of the week. If that happens, I'll put Rebecca back on investigations. We'll have two investigators at that time. But because of staffing, both injuries were on the same squad.
Yep.
So we had to make some adjustments there. The very beginning of July, charges were filed and two arrests were made on the Fairview and Morgan Park concession stand break-ins. I don't know if you guys were aware of that. In the month of July, we had one hundred and eighty one traffic stops and five hundred and seventeen calls for service. And my last item is the twenty seventh of this month is going to be coffee with the chief. We're going to have that up at the meeting house in Fairview. So that'll be from seven P M to.
Honey Ridge?
I'm sorry.
Is it Honey Ridge?
It's at Fairview.
Fairview, the meeting house in Fairview by the pool.
Honey Ridge.
Honey Ridge. What did I say? Fairview.
I read the report. I'm like, I read you were in Honey Ridge.
The meeting house in Honey Ridge.
Okay.
That's on the twenty seventh. Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Dan, anything from Public Works?
We got some highlights.
All righty.
Here we go.
Get the highlights. Doing some hiring, right?
We did some base repairs on Melrose Court around that cul-de-sac down there. We opened the pictures up there.
I saw the pictures. Yeah, look good.
We fixed it up, fixed the tree up for him and the garbage trucks were ripping out apart going around it. So we we made it pretty good. The next one is McVay Street. We had a small sinkhole which turned into a large hole.
Wow.
The pipe was, the bottom of the pipe was fifteen foot down, concrete pipe, and the pipe was broken. So we were able to repair the pipe, put a and add a catch basin to it and rebuild it up to the top, which turned out pretty well. Now, on the last note, we had good progress on the building down at Mayview. We had the roof on. It's the the metal's on the roof and it's almost closed in. So we're making good progress on that.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Nice job there.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Yeah. One thing to add, when we do extend the power up to Fairview, we'll have an opportunity to bring power to the the Public Works site for for internal and external lights.
I don't think we have anything on the request tracker or anything, Chris.
Yeah, just a lot of trash.
Solicitors report. Have any public comment? Okay.
I think we have one.
What's that? You got one? Hey, come on up. State your name and your address, please.
Pat de Blasio, four forty seven Washington Avenue, Bridgeville. Just wanted to come as a member of the South Bridge Board to reemphasize as budget season opens, the need for a new ambulance. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Anything with board discussion?
Got it over here?
We got one more. Oh, another one. Come on up. Yeah, get your hand up quicker, man.
I don't know how to.
That's okay.
So my name is Bhavin Bundia, and I'm living in the thirty seven Cannon Gate Drive next to the school building. So I have just a safety item. Yes, I'm noticing every time. So Oak Ridge Road and Presto Saigon Road. So there are new buildings are coming and then it's like a blind spot kind of thing. Most of the traffics are going. There is a no stop sign who is coming from the Oak Ridge Road. But there is a, no, there is a stop sign from Oak Ridge Road, but there is no stop sign coming from the Presto Saigon Road. So and it's like a busy traffic.
Yeah, I live up there. So you said you live. Do you live on Cannon Gate?
Yes.
All right. So I'm just trying to imagine where you're going. So you're going out the back way towards Saigon, right? So you go Battery Drive North.
Yes.
Make a left on Winchester.
Yep.
And then are you making a right or a left?
From Winchester, I'm going to the right.
You're going to the right to Saigon Road?
Oak Ridge Road.
You're going to Oak Ridge Road. Okay.
So Oak Ridge Road, when it ends, there is like a new buildings are coming, like there is a new homes are.
Oh, you mean down at the very, very, very end of. I thought you meant up by where we live. Okay.
Okay. So over there, it's like a sloppy kind of thing. And there is like a stop sign for one piece, but the other way is no stop sign. So I'm recommending to have a stop sign because I feel every time it's like a sport where the safety is the issue.
You mean on the back way coming out of B J's there? So as you're coming up like past the eighty four, put a stop sign there because you're right. It's like very, yeah.
Yeah.
I think one thing that is scheduled to happen once we issue occupancy permits for the apartments. After so many of them are built, there'll be kind of a post-construction traffic. After so many of them are built, there'll be kind of a post-construction traffic study that would kind of determine if, if what kind of improvements need to be made down there. So that is a state roadway at that intersection. But I do agree with you that it does need some safety attention. I think that window with the apartments, they are getting pretty close to, to coming online here would be the avenue to go.
And John, you're correct. That was part of the discussions when Apex came through planning, to revisit that, you know, once occupancy was issued.
Okay, that is the one. And one question, I don't know, because this is the first time. So if I need to put a suggestion, is there any online portal where we can put some kind of suggestion or like those kind of items? Or is the only place where I can come and then do that?
I mean, there is a portal, right? I mean, he's asking if he, if somebody wanted to voice that, there's a similar opinion. There is an online portal.
Right. Do you want to go ahead? Andrea, yeah, we have a couple of things we can point you to.
Yeah, you can go to our website, southfayettepa.com, and there's a button that says, well, I will show you. Report and issue. And you can, usually it's for something that's, something that could be completed within a reasonable amount of time, like fill a pothole or something. But you're welcome to also just put a suggestion such as that in there. But if it were to become a formal request, there would have to be a certain form to fill out or that wouldn't apply to a state road, John.
I mean, I think that would get it started. You know, we do have some paperwork where if people want to request signage or traffic studies, they can submit it. And then, you know, we route it to the proper agency if it's a state road or internally if it's ours. In this instance, that's happening kind of organically because that was part of the land development review process with the Apex Apartments. So I think we, you know, we're kind of on track to do that. But in the future, there is a way to do that. We do have a form that anyone can fill out to just request that someone look at an intersection for a safety reason.
Okay. Thank you so much. And in future, do we have any plan for like a community center kind of thing in the South Fayette? Because we are definitely lacking this.
If you'd have been here for the last 18 months. So down on the, at the old municipal building on 515 Miller's Run Road, that product, that project is underway. There will be some expansion to the library, refresh of the Senior Center, and there will be some community rooms at that center.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Since my boss is here, one of the board members over in Alkisand, I figured I... I was going to hide and he came in. I'm like, oh, now I have to say something. Joe Day from Alkisand, how's everyone doing tonight? Just here for a couple of quick things and I'll drop these off with you. John or you, board member. So a couple of programs I want to talk about, we've been going around the municipalities to discuss. Our Clean Water Assistance Fund. A lot of folks don't know they're Alkisand ratepayers, unfortunately. So they don't know if they're eligible for this program. But we know a lot of need is out in the service area for folks who can't afford their sewer bills. This program is based on median household income and amount of people in the family who live at the property. And it is $50 per quarter for a refund. So we have flyers for that. We have some information, some contact information. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up quickly is, I mean, they call it the World Series, plus the Super Bowl, plus the Stanley Cup. I call it the Alkisand Open House. Possibly the greatest event that's ever been invented, ever. It is Saturday, September 13th, two days before my birthday. I do accept gifts. Starts, opens to the public at 9:00 AM and it goes until 4:00 ish. If Arletta is feeling extra generous, we will have a couple more tours. Joking aside, it is a great event. Lots of activities for kids. They offer extra credit for our Scholastic Outreach Program. There are tours and free lunch at the sewage treatment plant. Who does not want that? I'm sure Pat will be there. It'll be great. But yeah, it is a great event. If you have the opportunity to come out, I strongly recommend it. So that is all I have. If you have any questions for Alkisand, nothing too technical. I'm not an engineer. I would be more than happy to answer those for you. He's doing a great job, by the way. Undefeated so far on our board, so. Any questions, folks?
I don't, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. Anything with board discussion? Or is anybody else?
Sue. You're good?
Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending.